I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, there's notes up here, people need them, just some people have gotten them up here. Public comment, yes?
My name is Bart Hornig, and we obviously have an agenda item to have a referendum. And that's as far as I know the only question so far. And not one to really waste a referendum, I have two suggestions for additional questions. Could we add to that referendum a question on whether or not we want to spend $6 million on sewers in Virginia? And then the second question I'd like you to add is, do we want tolls on state roads in Connecticut? Why waste a good time to tell us?
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Brent Lussi, I'm the Board of Education Liaison, and I just wanted to note that the referendum for the budget that the board passed through on May 7th for the $42 million voted, so it's voting all day, 6 to 8, regular voting.
And the budget tab on the website also. Yeah? Anything? Yes?
Well, speaking of the Board of Education, this has been an older item, but unfortunately we haven't had any meetings of public comments since February. We've only had one meeting a month. But on February 15th, you sent a letter to the Board of Education asking for the pause. In that letter, there's an accusation that I obtained a copy of the RFP, and had information that you didn't have, were privy to. Unfortunately, I never received a copy, I still haven't seen a public comment. I got my information from a Facebook page, it was managed by a letter, it was a good page, and it was on, it was the information that I spoke, and that being about on that Facebook. I never once received a copy as you accused me of in this letter, and you asked for an investigation in there. So I'm asking two things. One, if you send out a letter verifying that this false information was put out, the word that says that I did not receive a copy of the RFP. Also, I'd like an apology from you for accusing me of having something that I shouldn't have.
So if you're in public comment, Sean, you had mentioned that you have, ever have had a copy of the RFP?
No.
And you had indicated that you had had a copy.
No, I did not.
If you did not have a copy of the RFP, I do apologize, but it was definitely how I checked your comment, to say that you had a copy. As far as the investigation notes, that has to do with the Board of Education, there was obviously a leak in the Board of Education for that document to get out and to be sent out. So I was asking for the chair to talk to her board members and see what to be, the investigation wasn't about you.
I'm very, I said a basic apology because I've never said I've had a copy, except seen, I saw, I saw a picture on Facebook with that information, so.
You weren't clear about a picture, you said you saw it, so you know, to explain that now, I understand, but it was very disturbing that the Board of Education could not give a copy of that RFP, would not make it public to the First Select's office and other members of the Board, and other individuals on the Board that received a copy of it. So it was really, you know, the way that, however the Board handled it or didn't, those Board members were told to not share that information, and obviously somebody did, so.
That's only part of my concern, you can relate. You have my contact information, if you have questions on whether or not I had a copy, you can easily reach out.
I really took your comment, and said that that evening when you stuck your public comment very clearly, and I actually asked you to read the tape a couple of times. So again, if that was not true, then I apologize.
I would add one clarifying comment, that that document was released to the public, you can't release a document to the public and then make it not public. That was a public document that was opened at the bid.
You should have got a copy.
And it should have, the copy should have been sent to the Board Select, they did not do that. However, it was passed around at the planning zoning meeting the next day. There were copies all over the place. So unfortunately, I couldn't make the bid open, but there were at least 30 other people there, typically tell them that they're married to their select. So that document was made public.
Yeah, that was the first one we read.
Correct, that document was made public for about 10 minutes, so to sit and take in that level of detail to that document.
There were pictures all over Facebook.
If they want complete pictures.
I don't think Facebook is a place to be able to get facts or information.
It was the copies of the RFP, so I'm saying it was everywhere, it was at Open and Idol, the public document.
It was the first page, is all it was.
No, no.
No, it was the first page, because that's what Lori took out, was the very first page. And we didn't see the rest of it, to make that clear.
The rest of it was just pictures.
Those pictures weren't on it, it was one page, that very first page is all she put on it, and I'll argue that until the hellery is over.
Larry, I don't know what you're pointing.
No, no, I understand, but I'm almost enough.
It's a picture, it's a picture. Settle down! I don't know why you're pointing at me, what's the point of talking about, the RFP or the bitch?
The RFP, the results of the bid. The results of the RFP, the actual.
The document, Mark, that you picked up, that was opened at the.
Okay, that's what I considered the bid. The RFP was already out there signed.
Correct, it was the document in question. Anyone else? Yes, there's.
Since we are in Haddon Lake.
Can you do mine, just for the record for Joanne, so she gets names and everything and her identity.
Thursday, Bart, Haddon Lake.
Thank you.
A two-part question about the Yankee Atomic. Are they still paying taxes on the entire original property? Because it's all fenced off, you can't get on any inch of the property.
Yes.
And the second part is, is there any progress, any movement there? They've been doing some construction on power lines and stuff, but is there any movement on?
I actually got a meeting, my update with them next Thursday, so I will find out, but yes, they definitely are still paying taxes on the property. There are high taxes there. Yes?
Good morning, North American, Connecticut. I'd like to see the change of venue, it's nice to see the other side of the river. Unfortunately, Melissa still shares that Nigel is clear for proper respect, so I'll come whatever I have to challenge her on that, because she said she means because she's offended. But yet, her actions offend me, so I will follow her as long as she's going to offend me because she is offended. And also, like I mentioned earlier on, she's on the clock, and procedures on your dime are being, you know, she's not following proper procedures when she's a paid select. So you should have a little bit of a complaint. I'm just a veteran who's offended by somebody that won't respect our flag and our country. So I'm here to not interrupt your business, but this does matter. Thank you.
Welcome to the hat.
Oh, I love it, beautiful.
Anyone else? Yes, Jeff?
Morning, Attorney General, it's the Haddon Elementary School, and this is obviously a hot issue in town. The Board of Ed is done for the restructuring in our backyard going forward with, and as you discussed, the building tonight, one of the, some of the problems of what the Board has done, there's no future plan for what it's going to cost if their restructuring doesn't work, or what they're going to do if the demographics don't pan out, or what they're going to do even when they do turn around. And there's no, there's been no planning, estimation, really no forethought as far as what this could cost in the long run by getting rid of a property that's been in the district for so long. And as we debate whether or not what the town might do to school, just keep in mind that it might be our opportunity to do the plan that they failed to do, so that we could do something to make sure that we don't cost ourselves more money in the future since they're not doing the work.
Thank you. There's another man, I would guess that.
Yeah, I just wanted to broadcast my, the Brink Library, and the fact that they're having an event coming up on 27th of April. It's a Saturday night between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. It's called Food For Thought, Taste of Adam and Beyond. I encourage you, if you haven't already bought a ticket, to do so. If you buy them at the library in advance, you pay $35 a person, if you buy them at the doors, $40 a person. Please think about attending this, it's always a great event.
Alright, anyone else who probably would want? Alright, so approval of minutes from January 14th. Motion to approve the minutes? Discussion?
Yeah, a couple corrections and then one question. Under the public comment, Heather Pach, it's P-A-C-H. And then also the second, under Stubeel, or asked a question to Heather Pach. And then, under the, at the end, where it says, "Schlock and a motion have a course second side reservation." I don't know that that's exactly what I said, it could be, I'd have to go back and listen, but I'm wondering if we can table to see if that's what the actual motion was, it should be from day one said, so.
I just thought that. Jeff? Alright, well, Joanne does listen to the tape and goes back and forth, and she's here, she can tell you, or?
I don't know.
Do you want to double check?
I'll double check.
Alright, so what we can do is accept the minutes with the correction on Heather's last name, and. I don't think there's any big deal to. What is the concern of how the motion?
I don't think that that's what I said, but you guys can rule it out, you say no, and I'll listen to the tape, and then we can make, oh, no, the minutes, then we're fine.
On favor? Alright, next approval of minutes for February 11th. Motion to approve, it's the last week, the last week, or?
Yes.
The next week, there's a, it's the fourth week, and it's the last week. Still maybe a motion?
Oh, yeah, still, yeah, the last name. And then it's going farther down, instead of Ross Assen, it's Hanson, H-A-N-S-O-N. And then the next one, it's Marie Lippincott, L-I-P-P-I-N-C-O-T-T. And then again, farther down, on the second page, it's Gordon L.S.P. And under the Schlock statement there, she asked Howard Theory, not the Howard Theory, that's right. And then it's Marie Lippincott again, and the farther down, instead of Peter Mariam, it's Peter Baird, B-A-I-R-D. And then Liz Bazazi, just missing a C in the next one down. And then also, under Schlock and motion, the next sentence is Hanson, she draws Hanson with an O, and then it's Sue Carly, where the, where you have the blank last name, and it's C, capital C, A-R-L-H. And that's it.
Any other comments? On favor? Hi. February 27th. Any discussion? On favor? Hi. Hi, March 14th. Any discussion?
Yeah, where you have, under Retirement Ban on it, you have, "Schlock also raised concerns that every man driver did not have the proper license." I question if he had the proper license, not saying if he didn't have it. And since hiring a separated man driver as an independent contractor, that was never stated during the meeting. And if it was an independent contractor, there's a whole bunch of other rules that we would have to follow, but that was not the statement made.
The tape, yeah, alright. Corrections on favor? Hi. If you were making a correction, or?
Sure, doesn't matter.
Well, what's the correction?
The correction.
Why? The correction that you made.
What's the?
You said "did not" question that they had.
Yeah, and then the independent contractor.
And then these very much of the.
Yeah, okay.
Who'd I? Alright, March 25th. Any motion to approve this, please? Any discussion? On favor? Of staying on the side of tenants. Next, we have tax refunds. For real estate refunds, we have a total of $6,125.04. Motor vehicle refunds of $1,069.35. For a total of refunds of $7,224.95. Motion to approve? Any discussion? On favor? Okay. So, for our Sustainability Committee, part of the process of what we're working on to be certain of under the Sustainable CT is to have a communication strategy, so everybody got this ahead. We would just adopt this as our strategy. We've discussed that there's any other additional information or changes we can make, so I motion to approve this added communication strategy. Only motion, any discussion? On favor? Alright, so we have some roads, under the bond ordinance, we have, the force department has the approval to approve additional roads to follow under bonding. The only road that remains to have any piece of major construction left to it is the Thai Roads Section 2. That's due to effect, the Thai Roads Section 1 ended up with having a spring underground, and it's costing more money than we anticipated to fix. So knowing the issues with the wetness, and what we went through with all of the rain that we had last year, Public Works is not comfortable just doing the drainage that's required there because of the sensitivity of water that went underground. So we asked Jacobson to do some engineering plans for us, and this will be a piece that we need to be able to go out and contract. So in saying that, that's the last major construction, other than the million feet that we have scheduled. Being at Haddon Lake, we have, whoever else at Haddon Lake are going to start next week, to be built and paved with an additional road. So we have a little over a million dollars left in the bonding, putting contingency aside on those roads that we have to, and we have some older funding on some other roads. So I'm proposing that we add, and I'm going to assign dollar amounts to these right now because it just helps for the line items to be set up in the budget, and for a dollar amount, which is the best estimate given to us by the contractor, by Public Works, and by our town engineer, Joe Jacobson, to put a placeholder in place so we kind of know where we fell, where we didn't. So the roads that we will be adding on to approve, our Cory Hill Road for $324,908, Ardu Springs for $39,820, Schoolhouse for $75,855, Crow's Nest for $29,000. We need to add an additional $83,000 to Rock Landing, Heard Park $83,315, and Clarkhurst $129,000. So I can have a motion to approve that set for now, and as there's, actually, I apologize, thank you, add on the other roads. For chip ceiling, we need to add on for Reese Elder Road $57,633, Corny Road $18,840, Country Walk $4,247, Stonegate Circle $3,007, Quack Garden Court $2,487, Brookline Avenue $5,311, and Little Flawn Trail $4,734. Would for a total of $115,661. So, the motion to approve this road. One correction, it's Aggie Springs, it's not Ardu Springs. Thank you, listen. Any other discussion? On favor? I opposed. Can we discuss this first? Well, you guys are involved. I have a problem with this whole sheet, it's very unclear. So the money, the 1.6 was left over from the bond, right now. And that's with the overage that we're going to have to pay, so the projects that aren't finished yet, that are being done this year? Correct, but we need to hold the button for the entire road section 2, and see where we added on and updated across. And again, because we're not, even though there's contingency on the Thai Roads Section 2, I don't really want to allocate all the rest of the dollars until we know where we're going to end up with the Thai Roads Section 2. Hopefully at the next select meeting, we'll have one out to bid and we'll be able to award that project to get done. And then once all this other work is done, this spring, then we'll be able to reassess again, all these roads were picked on in a survey that the VHB did, but I also add, and these are all roads that are identified in Haddon Lake, since we're, that's the last piece unfortunately, because of all the rain last year, we never were able to finish what we needed to, and with the fair coming up, we just did the improvements we had to for the road race to kind of get to the winner. We figure since we're at Haddon Lake, let's finish up at Haddon Lake and get it set, and then we'll go back and look reality in terms of the number that's there.
Okay, so I would just like to make a suggestion that Little City be put on the list if there is any extra money left. It's pretty bad, there's a lot of houses up there, school buses wrecked up there, and I think it would be helpful.
Little City is one of the roads along with many other ones, again, we want to finish up where we started and where the castle where we started. Little City had work done years ago, set, and I'm not sure why the rest of it wasn't taken care of and that was done, but.
They didn't do the whole road, did they?
No, I know, and I don't know why it was set up that way, but it was very low and expensive, because of all the damage. So I would vote aye, as long as we can also be aware of Little City. And when we come up for the rest of the balance of the funding, we'll look at that. Any others? On favor? Hi. Alright. Alright, so the next piece is the Charter Revision Commission. There have been issues, yes, a lot of issues lately with the charter when it comes to labor law, violation with labor law by filing, what the labor attorney has to say on the area of issues. So I'd like to, Joanne, send an email out to the initial Charter Revision Commission to ask if they are willing to come back and fix up some of the issues that we had. We don't need to go through a whole 16 months as we did the last time, but I think there's a couple of things that need to be addressed. One is, we don't, we should not be in violation, violation of state and federal labor law, so we need to fix that. The other thing is, there was conversation with this committee, the chairman of that, that we look at town manager, and I think that we should have that committee come back and look to what we need to do if the residents are interested in having a town manager or not, and address the net loss overall. So we can discuss, hopefully get up, everyone responding to that that was on the initial Charter Revision Committee, with the exception of one person writing one of your books to respond.
Correct.
So we can appoint those individuals tonight, Rich Ray, to get them going, or?
Charter.
Alright, so we had none, I think, on the second. So I have a motion to approve Charter Revision Commission.
There shouldn't be, we're, as long as we're all right with our numbers, so I can be with Audrey not doing it, and we're still, we'll be less, right?
So, Amy Jakes Curti said no to the number eight. Well, let's first just make the motions on the first. So. Alright, so Wayne Ruddy said yes, John Hernandez said yes, Mike Best Stone said yes, Kate Anderson said yes, Bill Bowles said yes, Charlotte Frederson said no, Amy Jakes Curti said no, Tom Protroski said yes. So we have the votes of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
I would like to ask a question. This Charter Revision process we literally just went through, and they chose not to put forward the idea of a town manager. The citizens have already had the opportunity to vote on this, the state statutes would obviously trump our charter. I don't think there's any reason to open it up for that, obviously it says in the statute that no charter shall, etc., etc. Again, we just went through a very long process and have this put out for the vote, I don't see the need to go back up.
Well, and Chuck, and again, the chair of the Charter Revision Committee is here, if you want to speak also. The committee felt that it was such a big lift to revamp the charter since it was all overdue and that works here seem to have been done. There was discussion of a town manager, they actually brought Matt Perkins, who is now the chairman of West Perford, who was the town manager in Mansfield, to talk about it, and it was something that was discussed, and if you want to Charter Revision, they wanted to address it. So I think that the level of the changes that we can add in town, with the opportunity of economics, to pull some of the politics out of it, to be a really rough town for the business as it needs to be run, I think that it makes sense to look at it and let us, the hearings, do what we need to do, and let the Charter Revision Commission come up with their recommendations and see where it goes from there.
Okay, they've already made their recommendations, so again, this, and if you don't run a town like a business, a business makes profits, a town makes profits, that's what we're looking out for. If you're going forward, it's obviously going to be too big, it's unlikely to get the motion that we add Enshwing and Sean Moriarty to Charter Revision Commission, since we have so many to drop off.
Well, we're using the same committee members that we originally appointed, so.
That's a no.
That's a no. And again, if we end up with an odd number, we consider putting someone on, but right now, the way it works, with Ds and Us and Rs, we're balanced, this committee's already worked together, they know the groundwork of what they said, and a lot of these are from the top two lots. So we have three Rs, two Us, one D. This case is, I'm sorry. Two Us, one D, and one, two, three, four Rs. Sorry. Four Rs, one D, there are Rs, one D, and two Us.
Liz, if I can get a clarification?
I'm sorry, John.
If I can get a clarification?
We did a public comment at the end.
Relative to the subject, it's up to you, yes?
Oh, alright, I'm the Charter Revision Member, I know who he is.
Up to you.
Tom?
It's up to you.
Yes, I am.
So it sounds like, you know, having been on the commission, the issue relative to the labor laws and actions, and I see that as something that needs to be addressed right away, and as part of our recommendation relative to the town manager piece, you know, we. you know, we recognize that, that's a long, that's a long one. There's a lot of homework and a lot of time, so my only concern would be if you're worried about being in violation of labor law, or do the deep dive that we had thought it would take, live in town manager, I'm gonna maybe wanna bifurcate those two and, uh, you know, address it in that fashion rather than wait, because there could be quite some time to come back with an answer, vote it through.
There, there, well, it could be, but I think that we have to do it. And Melissa's made a point about several reasons, and I'm, um, and it's written about that I'm in violation of the town charter, and the labor attorney has assured me that I cannot break the labor in the federal, state labor laws.
I agree with her.
So, I don't want to be, I don't want that to continue. So, I would, I'd like to do, there's been a few other things that came up in the course of just doing town business the past year, um, that need to be addressed. So, um, again, this committee's pretty fresh, you all finished December of 2017, so I think it's a good opportunity to get everybody back and do what we need to do to be able to, to let it out. Um, I don't know how long it'll take, I don't imagine it'll take the entire sixteen months that the general statutes allow us to take, but I think that it's something that we need to address.
My only point is, you know, fix the year, then that's, that's kind of staying in violation of the law, or bifurcate it.
I understand, but I think we gotta get the committee down back together and let it, and make those decisions and discuss, like, that is the right way to do it. We're actually about against the law. I mean, as long as you do the right thing, it's just what's in the charter is, is contradictory. And as long as, uh, the, it's just about human negotiations. Uh, but hiring and firing is definitely a charter issue, and also changing hours of any dime you've been employed. So, again, um, I'd like to make a motion, I think we should vote on it, that we add Ed Schwinn and Sean Moriarty to the Charter Revision Commission. All right, so, um, are you amending the motion? I'm pretty amending the motion or saying part of the motion, like, just, I would like them as part of the Charter Revision Commission. That's fine. Um, all right, so, um, let's do it in stages. I have a motion to reopen Charter Revision Commission. Any discussion? Uh, favor, I, and to appoint, um, Melissa, I'm not gonna add members on this committee that we're not, that we're not happy with. Um, and so, the members that have been serving on the Charter Revision Commission, I feel it was well represented of our population, um, fulfilling all requirements as our party, so... I think it'd be great to have a third party on there and another D. We have a third party, we have two Us. No, that's not a third party. It's a majority. Well, as far as the motion, the motion is to appoint Wayne Ruddy, John Hernandez, Mike Best Stone, and Kate Anderson, Bill Bowles, and Tom Ruchowski to Charter Revision Commission. On favor, I oppose. So, again, my, my motion is to appoint Wayne Ruddy and Sean Moriarty. A lot of better votes. Okay, so, we'll take them on, on favor, opposed, and opposed. All right. We have paperwork that, yeah?
You resolution, or...
Yeah, discuss that? All right. So, uh, we need to make a motion to direct, and to deal with that, um, issues. So, one issue was, um, the legal law. One issue was the town manager. One issue was the value of property owned. One other one. Rich, do you have a number, both of us, do you?
I was probably given a little bit of, um, leniency to just clean up anything that is in violation of our current practice or laws that were...
So, you're saying they didn't catch that the first time?
Correct.
And did the attorney who looked at it? There are more errors in there, you're saying?
There was something else that came up, I thought, had to do with the word of education and this whole piece of, of, of Hattan Act. But there really was a limit. It could have been just people saying for the town to have control, um, but we can't have control. So, that could be the piece of, I think, that, uh, which would be this. So, we can direct that to them, so.
So, what are the, the...
So, the labor law, the town manager, and now the property.
And what do you mean value of property?
It's very vague about what $1,000 means. Does $1,000 mean value or the assessed value? I think, uh, when this charter was written, you know, so if somebody would just place per tax, you know, $150 a year, you know, I think we have to, have there be more skin in the, um, so is it $1,000?
Tax for a robbery, is that what you're saying?
No, it doesn't.
What does, what is the sentence?
Because members of the town meeting, electors of the town, entitled to vote at the town meeting, including eighteen years of age, or any person who owns a property, listed on the, and must give $1,000 or more. So, is it value, is it assessed value? It's not clear.
The property listed on the grant list, that would be the, the assessed, uh, uh, their, their assessed value on the grant list, whatever the grant list number is. The grant list has what their property's worth, not the assessed.
Again, $1,000 is just below enough, so I think it needs to get up to it.
You're talking about a handful of people that you capture who aren't already holding residence in the town. You're also... Bye. Uh, favor, I oppose. All right, so, River Cog, uh, we have to do two for resolutions, one for 2017, with an MOA for Homeland Security, and one for 2018, and maybe two separate ones. So, River Cog sent these over, um, one resolution, both of them weren't done previously. Uh, they're getting caught up with DMS and things, uh, to be in, in place. So, I have approval, um, to adopt the resolutions and the MOU for 2013, for 2017. I like that one. Any discussion? Uh, favor, I, and then adopt the 2018 resolution and MOU for Homeland Security. A motion to approve that.
A motion?
Any discussion? Uh, favor, I, all right. So, um, we have two vacancies in public works. Chris Corsa, uh, put ads out to hire, um, maintainers. He went in the interview process, him and Joe Santoro. And the two, uh, individuals that have been recommended to hire are Joseph Sapiop, who is a Hattan resident, and Jared Cutler, who is a resident of Hattan. They both have their CDLs, um, and, um, they were the two that, I think, that were recommended to hire. Motion to approve. Any discussion? Uh, favor, I... One quick thing I just looked up about the last, the Charter Revision Commission, it's actually a state statute, um, that determines that it's $1,000 in property. It says, since state law allows non-resident property owners to vote at town meetings, towns do not have the authority to raise the $1,000 threshold. Only the general segment may do so. So, I don't know if we want to amend the motion. Sure, we'll amend the motion, or we'll, or we'll make the motion, actually, we should make the motion. Without that in there?
No, let's just go back and, and just...
Well, we can hold it aye, so... Well, then, you could just redo there and they'll just figure that out.
No, we'll go back and go back to this motion, go back to the sixth Charter Revision Commission, motion to have the Charter Revision Commission redo the labor law and the charter. Any other discussion?
On favor, I oppose. So, now we need to grant, uh, set a town meeting for a couple of different things. Grant with driveway easement across town property adjacent to Lot Number 12 at 141 Silver Spring Drive, uh, property in the downtown scene. So, Bill, do you want to explain what we need to do and why?
This is property at the Silver Spring subdivision. Pass it over to the, the survey. The survey senior bought the property, passed it on. The survey senior bought this property from the town without benefit of the survey. So, it's pretty much as is. What he bought was the property that you see on there, and he assumed, and I think most of them assumed, that the driveway that existed was going up onto the property. Once he had the survey, it turned out that the driveway actually encroached on the town's Lot 7, his open space. Um, driveway was already there, um, so what he's asking for is an easement over the open space piece to get to his developed piece of property. And you can see the driveway goes up across to his property, up high is where his piece is developed for, and it's already made to see his site on it.
Bill, what's the acreage of, of our lot, so?
It's, uh, it's probably major, it's pretty much a building lot. I think it was a building lot, in a tenth degree of building lot, it didn't turn, so they made it open space, so it's not a large piece of property. Um, just makes sense, just makes environmental sense. You could deny this, and he would have to split his own driveway in, running parallel to the existing driveway. He'd clear property, at least a hundred, couldn't mature trees, he'd be approaching into the wetland area, um, to be an environmental impact. Then, once you get past the wetland, which is showing on the property, he'd be really fucking ready to get up to his property to touch. Which makes common sense, which granted, you can look back on, the open space is already there, so I'd recommend...
We look value instead on that, because then we look value.
That hasn't been discussed. I'll be, I'll be, I'll be... We're... Uh, this is the scale.
Three, three?
This one, I don't see any, you need to tell the value, the price for it.
No, 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 I'm just wondering if you should put a value on the town meeting, um, that is official law.
Like I said, if, if he was, if it wasn't already there, and he wanted to use the town properties, put in his driveway, then it would have some value property, but it's already there. And it was always assumed that it, it was built to service a lot to be used.
All right, so I have a motion to, uh, approve, send the town meeting a grant of driveway easement, approximately five days, it's a lot of, 141 Silver Spring Drive, property of the downtown suburbs. Any discussion? All in favor? Um, I feel... All right, the last piece, it needs to go to town meeting, um, is a acceptance of the donation of the open space for Swan Hill, for the region school district. Um, at the Board of Education meeting, uh, the board, they have a motion to donate Swan Hill to the Town of Adam. We need to have some discussion about that. When the property was donated to the Town of Adam, the property of the land, the area of Swan Hill, and the building where the school sits, was voluntarily donated as one piece. So, we need to be able to separate those pieces, um, in order to take possession of the open space. In addition, uh, we can at the same town meeting, if we decide to, um, also, as we are donating, uh, as the school district is donating Swan Hill to the town, the town can at the same town meeting donate that property to, uh, the land trust, if we so decide to do it. So, that's what we can do, and stuff, and another time we can discuss. I am meeting, I was hoping to meet with Bill Cowan, uh, before today, but I'm not meeting with him until tomorrow. So, Rich, I don't know how we separate this, or the property lands, or, I guess, Melissa can go on that too, or...
Right.
How you recommend we, we proceed with this?
Well, you can, you can proceed by, uh, designated, uh, from the area, uh, Bill and I talked about, the natural divide for this property, is the Bible Rock Book that goes through. It's about twenty-five acres on the roadside, and about a hundred and thirty acres of Swan Hill. So, you can say that that is the piece that you're willing to accept as donation from the school district. Um, it would still have to be surveyed, uh, it's also goes with DNC for, I think, for review. Those are the, really, the two steps for accepting the donation. You don't have to, you're not buying it, or looking at the appropriation. So, if we, we can forward review, town meeting, and then the process of actually splitting the property, survey, and having the school district convey a deed to the town for the, uh, that parcel. The debt is for to take the additional step of, of transferring it from the town to the land trust, that would be a separate, uh, item, um, the town meeting would agenda, and you would have that in use.
What about the access?
Bill and I talked a little bit about keeping an access to the street, I think, right, to Sabre Road.
What you're saying, wouldn't that be done at that time? So, that way it's, you know, maybe it's a rocky side or something.
Yeah, we're, we're gravitating that term on the side, designating that the property for Swan Hill.
Okay.
So, people actually, or, or, yeah.
Here, you can, you know, I think, for this...
Who does that take your, your space?
I think, showing, a couple of different options. And I think it is important that you have access to the trail system from Sabre Road. Um, so the first map shows the overall property, um, first map shows the overall property of 155 acres. It really is two, it's, it's all one property, but it really is two distinct pieces of property. There's the school's property, and then there's a large, and a letten, and by the rock book that goes through. So, it's really divided, and then it's steeply, you know, and you can see from, from Sabre Road, goes very steeply uphill from there. Um, the second page shows the trail network on Swan Hill, and it's really critical that you keep this, because it's a very neat trail system, it's very popular, and you can see the trail heads are down behind the school. So, that's very important, we have access to those. So, and then the last page shows really our relation to the school, to, to the dress stuffs. So, as I looked at it, and we talked, we talked to Rich about it, we talked about different ways to subdivide the property, you know, with the goal of access to, to divide the property, school, and open space, access to the, to the trails, and maintaining the usable property on the school piece, which I'm sure the Board of Education is gonna want it too. So, we looked at three different options. It could work. We really do right, we have option one, that's option. So, we talked about option, actually, option two for, option two, you can buy the rock book for the division, this is the school, you can buy the rock book to divide the property, and leaves the large letten with the school property. Not really useful to any developer or any future owner of the school. So, that just allows, leaves that there. But the problem with that is that we have to have a large public access easement from Sabre Road all the way up to the town property, Swan Hill property. That is very undesirable for a future owner of the property. They don't want to have public access on the private property, so that's pretty undesirable. Rig, option rig, and bring the line down to follow letten, pretty much. So, the letten stays with Swan Hill property, which is appropriate, because it brings open space, and we divide off the school. And then a much smaller public access easement coming from Sabre Road.
Would I bring it down to part, or, or, part of, if we were to get that one down?
The school's...
I think that, I know, you're trying to tend at that.
Yeah, it does.
Those are the...
Yeah, it would be ten eighty. And that's, we're gonna leave all the usable property on this old school, okay? The last one, option one, is two by far the most desirable. As I said, any owner is not gonna want public access, even if Rich will do that, the private seller, or whoever else owns it does not want the public to, for, launch access on the property. So, option one, option... So, option 1, option 1 divides off the school property and pulls exactly 10 acres of land, but takes the Swan Hill property all the way between the school and the church. So, it actually is only for y'all with Sabre Road. I looked at that area, easily develop a trail in there, which would get you to the trail heads and on the Swan Hill property. By far the most desirable from a future owner, a school perspective, from a town perspective. There was a lot of talk in the beginning about having, um, parking access. You look around, you see what you're doing, parking at the green, parking, the public parking down the street. I really think we should be encouraged, we can park anything and walk up into it, rather than preserving the spot for people that might use it sometime. So, I think the piece between the school, between the church, you can easily develop a trail from Sabre Road if we get you open to that area, and I think that's the best solution. It preserves all the available area, on this 10 acres land. I think that's a, that's a whole other situation. I don't think the board should have anything to do with that. We're not taking any people away to move out of the property. We're leaving 10 acres. If you rezone it to village, the zoning would allow, you know, it's 10, it's 10 units per acre. So, we'd up to 100 acres, 100 units, which is not going to happen at any rate.
From the school, from the disline that you did here, to the church property, do you want it? What issue?
Did, did, did he say anything about the... Anyway, now with the survey.
Yeah, the issue is, thank you, Bill, for all of this, this is great. Uh, the issue is that we're putting the property forward, because the board of education did not technically vote to... They initiated the process to donate and or sell for a nominee. They didn't settle this. And the property is now parceled right now. We can't go to a town meeting without the nitty gritty details of the parcels. So, I would, we can send a letter of intent to the board of ed, and say that we are all ready to go. Once we have everything ready, we could offer to take both parcels for $15,000 of the cost of the survey. Um, because they talked at their last meeting on Tuesday, last week. They're concerned they've gotten an estimate for the survey at $10,000, the survey rate that money may come from. I think they would probably would have done a survey for any future owner, for their own sake, when they sell it. Um, but I think the town would be willing to give us $15,000 for the entire parcel. But right now, it's one parcel. So, I don't think we can go forward with it until the board votes. Unless we voted to take the whole parcel and go to town meeting for free or whatever.
Alright, so please, how do we separate this?
How do you separate it?
I think we make motion, but I don't, I really want to, um, move forward on the Swan Hill piece and preserve that for open space. And I don't want to, uh, let too many things get in the way. They did, the board of education did do two separate votes. I think they do need to get a agreement then, as to where we're going to develop the border. I think that if we make motion based on things happening, and it all goes in small pieces, we should move forward with the town meeting. If we get a pickup in it, and there's something that we can't do, we're going to have to discuss it. But I'd like to try to get along with this way.
We could move forward with the town meeting, and basically say...
Subject 2?
Well, we said option 1, you know, lay out a 50 to 75 foot side yard accessway, you know, deeded accessway to the back acre, preserving 10 acres of the front, uh, school property. And call it that, subject 2, a more formal survey at the time of the meeting.
The townspeople need to vote on something very specific. I understand, I mean, I like option 1, but it's not specific to the picture of these people.
You could be very specific in saying, you know, carving out 10 acres on the front of the school property, you know, with a side yard, deeded access to the rear property of all the remaining land.
Yeah, I mean, with the...
You don't have to have the survey first, in other words.
With the currently available mapping, it's all to scale. We could actually give pretty accurate, you know, 75 feet, and so we could come up with a pretty accurate survey. When they did the, um, new septic system at the school, there was a survey done in the front, so we could go off of that. We could, you know, we're really following the fence line of the playground, is the way to describe it. I think we can make it very clear with pretty good distances. You know, from Sabre Road, 360 feet or whatever it is, across and around, between close out that 10 acres, and then show the access going up towards Swan Hill from Sabre.
Yeah, the, I think it's a good idea, it's a good option. Again, we don't have a specific to the board, but they technically did not vote to sell it to us. They voted to initiate the process of the sale.
We just have the press conversations with their town, with their attorney. But the attorney is not voting on the board of education.
Well, Bill, the way, the way that it came out from the meeting, I recall, I spoke with the district's attorney, is that, you know, they're looking to us, to the town, to decide how do you want to proceed. And they are looking for, well, I think to this stage, point for, somebody else said, they've kind of dropped it on the town. That's exactly how you want to proceed with this property. So, the discussion was, they would be willing to donate Swan Hill. What is that exactly? And frankly, until we discovered that it was 155 acre parcel, I thought that these were two separate standing parcels as well. The deed reflects that it was one, so you have to figure that, that's a little bit. But the intention is for, you know, if the town so desires, and you decide that at a town meeting, to accept the donation of Swan Hill, that's what the district is willing to do as to that piece. The other piece, and you probably didn't get it, is the other 10 acres of the school, and they're looking for, you know, purchase again.
Hold me to take it, honestly.
Yeah, take one step.
I would, whatever we decide to do, I really would like a hearing before the meeting, with seven days in between, and just to do it, but I might for important interest in this. It allows people to come out and discuss it, and then come back and vote. This is a big, these are two very big options here. The, I think we would actually be sending it to the board of finance before it goes to a town meeting.
What about reason?
Because I think all of this, anything that has potential cost, would have to go to board of finance.
Open, we're just talking Swan Hill right now. So, I understand, but I know there's no potential cost. And in my last conversation, again, I need to do that tomorrow, but, you know, the land trust is set up to do the trails, to do the markings, to do what we need to do. We've talked about, you know, donating the boat property to them also. So, I think, again, by the town, because the way that the property was conveyed to the district, and now for the district, they can't just go to the land trust, we're trying to...
I'm trying to give effect to that right of first refusal, so it really is up to the town to decide how it wants to handle it. And we talked through the idea of the district donating it directly to the head of the land trust, and their attorney, and then I agree, that they're trying to give effect to this right of first refusal, where it's the town that has to be the party that accepts or, you know, requires the property back from the school district. Once you have it, you want to give it to the land trust, but that's a good prerogative. I think you can do that at the same town meeting, and power to say that.
Yeah, I just think that, I believe, and I could be wrong, I believe again, that I think board of finance has to be a part of anything that has a fiscal note, fiscal note quality. It might be small for Swan Hill, it does have a fiscal, of insurance cost increases and things like that. Um, potentially any legal costs, uh, maybe we need to work on that before vote unless, but, yes. We've tried to make a motion to go to a hearing at the town meeting, but I think we'll go ahead and show it.
Alright, well, again, if we're going to just turn around and donate it to the land trust, we all want the same thing. I think we're complicating it.
It's just the process, it's not something that I...
It's not a question of the process, I think it works. There's a donation of open space that's going to come into the town. If we have to do a survey, it's under the dollar now, that we need to go to town meeting for, if we can do that if we need to. I don't help with the board of finance, but we can speak to the meeting. Obviously, we have to go to the board, there's things that we have to do, to want to make sure that we're all, everything's in mind. But again, I don't want to delay the process of getting this property going and moving, and having anything else to not be in the town of it. So, um, you know, I'm going to go by your recommendation.
Well, I said town meeting. Doesn't go to board of finance.
We go to board of finance, you know, we, Joanna and I looked at dates, we go to board of finance next week, on Monday. And then the next P&amp;Z meeting is...
It's on the agenda for the 18th, I believe.
Okay, so, we'll notice it on the 18th. And we can go to town meeting on the 24th, right?
So, like a hearing, a hearing first.
Melissa, everybody wants this property, why would we have a hearing? Why?
If we're doing both, I think we should do Haddon Elementary School.
Haddon Elementary is completely separate.
Why is it separate?
And we'll get into that in a minute, but this can go, every, I don't know one resident in Haddon that does not want Swan Hill.
No, that's fine, but if, I think we should do Haddon Elementary School.
We can have a hearing on Haddon Elementary School. Swan Hill is very easy to do. We vote, we go to town meeting, we vote on it, we accept it, we turn around and work with the land trust to see if they're willing to accept it, and do it all in one meeting, and it's just a hearing, and it's done.
Yeah, that's, I have the problem with that, but again, why don't we add Haddon Elementary School to that?
Because it's different. And Rich, we'll get into that in a minute, that's why they're two separate actions. And we'll talk about Haddon Elementary in a minute. So, we can word it where, do you think we can probably get, I just don't know, with the board of education, whether it wins your next board meeting, the 24th? So, it's not going to be able to go through 24. Alright, so, um... Why don't we make a motion to accept the donation of open space for Swan Hill based on the designated, uh, original values, property?
Can Paul tell me to accept the donation of Swan Hill, so it's, Bill was option 1, preserving 10 acres for the head of elementary school. Paul's...
Part of the rule of, of zoning, the board of education actually donating it to the town, for the value of $1. And then the second, he's sunk down with the, uh, the town, maybe just vote on that, so I think that we have a motion.
I think they have a proposal down there.
Any discussion? All in favor? All clear? All right, and then the second motion would be the agreement of Haddon Land Trust or the town council to donate that same property to the land trust. The value of $1. All right, any other discussion? All clear? And then we'll set the time of these, however, to be determined. And as a meantime, depending upon the time, we're just trying to do both of these together. But we might as well go to the town meeting for the driveway or town meeting for the open space. All right, Haddon Elementary, which?
So the number of issues that we want to decide about Haddon Elementary School, we've already figured out many pieces, but what are we actually going to, what are we going to tell the town in terms of purchase? The other item is the amount, the dollar amount that we want to propose for the purchase. In the setting of referendum, for the town meeting for that purchase. You know, this is a discussion, we need to have a referendum, if you want to go on it, so you guys have the specifics. Kind of taking those who are very carved out, very, we're discussing, carved out, of the tenants. Any questions on that aspect of it? See, and this is really rehashing it for those of you who live. A right of first refusal so far is really nothing more than a resolution of the district from 1972 that indicated that if the district weren't to dispose of any property, it would give a first refusal right to the town's financial property. So that's been a discussion, a lot of debate between myself and the district attorney and the town of Killinworth's town attorney as well. The initial thought was that Killinworth had some sort of ability to have a right of first refusal, but the resolution is not clear. As to that, we've all concluded that that's not the case. That's only the town of Haddon, because that's where the property came from. We also discussed the dollar value of that might be. A right of first refusal by law is really what's known as a conditional option. It's your ability to purchase the property under the condition that somebody else makes an offer to purchase it. And then the right is really to match that offer. And so purchase or forfeit. So that's essentially what's been established in case law through the years. There's no law or statute about that. But a right of first refusal in common parlance is to match an offer that's on the table. There's usually a time associated with that. Maybe there's a certain period of time, there's none of this resolution. Legally speaking, that resolution really doesn't fall in the water. This is an effort to try to make, you know, make good on what the intention of that resolution was designed to do. The school district is indicated that they're willing to, you know, listen and work with you as to what your desire is. So if you were to say, we want to put it before the town, the purchase back for $450, I don't think you'd have a lot of pushback from the school district. If you said, no, we don't want purchase for $450, we think we should purchase it for less, then you might get some pushback from the school district. We talked a lot about the dollar value of it. The town of Killinworth is concerned that it is not some sort of, you know, windfall to the town of Haddon. They sent a letter to the regional school district.
Did you get this? Got the A and R card?
I did not get that. I've seen it on Facebook, but I did not get it. I just got it, so.
So anyways, first of all, the Killinworth's letter, they have some concerns about kind of making sure that there's value associated with the purchase of the property. They reflected on time, and they had the purchased property back, and they expect the same process to be followed here. They also are concerned about if there was a donation of the school property, that it would be somehow entitled out to offset if there were no value appreciated. So they reflected on time, back when the school district was formed, and the Haddon's contribution to the school district in terms of dollars was greater than Killinworth's. And Killinworth had any higher assessment for a period of time in order to make that balance. So they expect that this is actually a purchase, so that dollars flow back into the school district and that maybe we have the finances for it. That's essential, like you said.
I did read to Kathy earlier today, just to see, and she said that both the Board of Select and Board of Finance felt the president and then Seth, and Haddon Killinworth had to buy property back in the eighties to build their town hall and where their emergency services are, back from the district. She felt that we would have to do this, that there should be some type of compensation from the residents of Haddon. So we're just going to talk to their town council in addition to the Board of Education question. So, you know, there's a couple of steps we could do. I mean, one is, we say, okay, we're going to pose this question, and we're going to go to referendum, and we're going to ask the residents of the town to vote to decide money on this property. And I do have some costs in what the property will be to maintain it. We can, and that, also that whole process goes back to go to the Board of Finance. And I think we should help the parents and information on that because there's a lot of information out there to make sure the residents have the facts. It's tough because the Board of Education owns the property. They do have a bid on the table. The developers looking for concessions from the town, and the Board of Education doesn't have authority. So does the town council want to drive the bus on this property? So there's a lot of pieces to this as to what's the best thing to do. And what I don't want to do is end up in a lawsuit with the town of Killinworth over the value of Haddon Elementary School. When this whole reason that the district is saying that they're, you know, closing it is to save money. Because there's going to be an impact to the town of Haddon.
First, I'd like to mention a few things. There hasn't been an official offer for this property. It's just a bid. In fact, the Board of Education has stated that, Calum Theory has stated that this is just a bid from one business developer. It's not an official offer. Second, the Board of Education voted to give or sell for a nominal fee this school to...
For $10?
What's that?
It was $10. Like, a nominal fee, such as $10.
Right, right, right. And that was part of the motion. And as far as Killinworth not getting all of their money's worth, for decades, we have been shorted millions and millions. No fault of Killinworth's, but we have been shorted millions of dollars over two decades from our ECS, millions. And I think the school...
That's a statement, Melissa, I mean, that's one of the things.
It doesn't matter. They've been receiving extra money. Now, if we decided that we ought to put forward to the town a dollar figure, $450 was for the entire, the 10 acres, that was for the district. So I would assume that we would take whatever our share of that is, and we would purchase it for that share, not for the entire $450. I still think that is not a nominal fee. I would suspect we would make another bid for the property and let the Board of Education know where our number is.
Are you, when you say go to a town meeting or go to referendum to ask the residents if we should pay, do you mean a non-buying question? Or do you actually mean going forward with the process of the town meeting?
I'd be going with the process of letting the residents vote if they want to buy Haddon Elementary School. So I suggest maybe this is a perfect idea, time to have a hearing. Get everybody in the room, hear from all the residents, talk about options. Because a lot of people are confused that we are taking this property and then using it for a town hall. This is property that we could, the town of Haddon needs to control what happens to the largest parcel and the largest building in the entire town. We need to drive that process. So I think we need to have a hearing. It's something that I've been asking for, for over a year now. And then, once we hear from the residents, we can decide on a price and go back to education. And the hearing can happen very quickly. That's my suggestion. So I'll be happy to make a motion to that, affect it.
You mean what?
They came up with, they were just writing...
Go ahead, you came up with your first one.
Well, the board hasn't had an opportunity to talk about it. They haven't had it. And the intention of the board versus what is legal in now Killinworth is waiting, is, you know, is complicated.
At the recent school district meeting, we were all, the intention, I think, was to turn it back to the attorney, to try to figure out what's the process for it, to give effect to that right of first refusal. And to see what the town's appetite is for acquisition of the property. And that's at a very high level, and we have it. There was discussion about the donation of Swan Hill, which you guys are going to move forward with. And then the question comes, how do you want to go about acquiring the remaining ten acres of the school? Is it a purchase? Is it acceptance of a donation? Or something in between? Right? And I'm telling you, the discussions I have had with the district attorney and the Killinworth attorney, and White, and Killinworth's first electon's letter about the effect of a donation on one end would cause the town of Killinworth a lot of anxiety and processes to be to recourse, you know, to the town of Haddon or to the school district for, you know, for financial compensation. I don't think it gives full effects to what the meaning of that right of first refusal is. And we've kind of hashed through your idea that that's not really an offer and acceptance, it's a bid. The town, I'm sorry, the district attorney feels that it is buying it. They put out an RFP, those were response, all things we need, well, they were gone forward and sold the property. But they have a determination of that in this process. So they feel that it's a buying, you know, or offering. And that's kind of where we are. So, you know, I think you're, Melissa, your point that, you know, maybe it's not a full value, maybe 60% roughly, right? Is that 60? You're going 60%?
261, it's 58%.
58%.
261, that's how it sounds.
So the town of Haddon bears about 58% greater, you know, 58% to 42% of the costs of the school district. So that may be one way of looking at it. The other thing we did discuss was, in terms of the offer itself, the $450 also had carve outs. It was asking for tax abidings from the town. We can go back into the mix, and it says really not a $450 offer. You know, so there's some different ways, but you guys have to wrestle with that. And I think ultimately, though, a straight up donation is not going to fly with the school district or Killinworth financially. And a better course, a smoother course, to get to the end result of acquiring the property would be a purchase for some dollar amount that is justified, right?
Yeah, I understand. No offense to the attorneys in the room, when you were discussing this, this is the Board of Education's decision.
Oh, great. I think, there's, I believe, that I will tell you, and I said this to you in a fair frame. They are kicking in down the road, passing the buck. All right, and this is something that they should decide. And rest of the, to your point, you know, it's not well thought. And so we're stuck trying to figure this out. Now, having said that, there's an opportunity here as well, right? It's very important, to your point, that you control what happens in the setup there, right? To take that parcel, Swan Hill and the school is important. So take this opportunity, and take, go by the horns, give you control of the process, because they're letting you be in control of the process, and we'll make sure that gets done. That's your turn.
So again, we could have a town hearing. We could send out a letter to the Board of Education with our intent that we're going to have a hearing and discuss with the townspeople what we want to do. And...
They're looking, they're looking for a process. They want to know that you're proceeding with the process. I don't think you have to solve this all tonight. I think you need to get a process on the books that says, we're going to have a town meeting on this day. We are going to send it to referendum on that date and, you know, kind of work that one through. So that they know that you're moving in that direction.
Yeah, and I think that's, we could definitely send them notice that we, well, I'll make a motion that we call a town hearing for the discussion of purchase of Haddon Elementary School and its surrounding ten acres.
Okay. Right, second half, discussion. All right, and with that, I think we need to be able to have all, I do have most of the information I already requested from the district attorney from the board on expenses, appearing costs, and, you know, we have to insure and do everything else for that. And this, we do have to report on the rights of, obviously. All right, so.
I would say, you guys, let me, put a date after.
Yeah, we have to do this. Do it in the next three weeks, whatever the timing goes. We could actually, if you want, let's do it the same night, let's hold the hearing the same night as the meeting that we hold the Swan Hill at. Because you already have the people there. They all have to come out again. They'll be ready to discuss that whole parcel. So I'll make a, amend my motion to call the town hearing on the same date that we call the town meeting for Swan Hill.
All right, so what we'll do, though, because for the sake of the, we'll do the town meeting first, because that should be very simple to do. Again, we think it's got to be a lot of discussion, and a lot of people attendance for this meeting, and that was said. So maybe we do one at 6:00, and we do one at 6:30.
I would say 6:30 and 7:00. 6:00 is really early for a lot of people, especially parents with kids and, you know...
Well, we do the public hearing at 6:30. It's still early. I just think, Melissa, it's kind of, I think it would be a very late meeting. A long meeting would just find, or maybe get home to it. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to make it where it's late enough that people can get home from work, but it's not so late that they won't find. And that's the concern of the 7 o'clock meeting. The 24th of April, right? It's a Tuesday. We check to see if the firehouse is open. Oh, sorry, the 23rd.
That's the Board of Ed meeting, was that your Board of Ed meeting?
Yeah.
So you say it was later.
I'll make that sound. How about Monday, the 22nd?
All right, let's stick to hold a public hearing the week of April 22nd, and we'll look if it's available if we can, the firehouse that I'm at.
May I just make a suggestion? I think that the firehouse is going to be overrun that night. And it's going to be a very interesting gathering. How about using, like we have many times in the past, the auditorium at HES?
Yeah, it's a good idea.
It's much better parking.
Yeah, we check to see if we can...
We'll check on the middle of the lane, so right now.
The week of, no, we're just doing the week. I'm just going to say the week of April 22nd. We need to see what parties are meeting, who's meeting, what buildings are open, where...
Some place cool might be better. All right, so we can have a follow up paper. All right, that is it for our business group. Call the comment?
Um, I was in the, in that last week. For the people that don't come from that area down, there's two things I wanted to point out about the firehouse. The truck with the slot on it, that came from our Haddon fire department. And it's sort of like a sign of the times. Haddon has a problem using it because it's a standard chip where Haddon has drivers. Just thought I'd point that out. It's a sign of the times. Most people want automatics. Haddon Lake Fire Department is a little weird, maybe, but... The other thing, though, is I was fortunate to be here just after they swept the parking lot here because they were sweeping all the roads. And on the long term, the 10 meter Capitol Way has replacement parking and driveways at all the fire parks, all four. The other three can wait. This one, and you don't see them because the trucks are parked over, but there's at least three aisles under those trucks. And I was pleased to hear that you're going to be paving a good amount of roadway just next week. And I wouldn't have personally, I mean, we're talking outside. I would have a problem if you could do an adder to one of those paving contracts to do it now because it will save you on mobilization and maybe square foot costs, if you know.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
I just had one question, and I think we touched on it, but it's... Oh, sorry, Joe Rizzo. I think we touched on it, but I don't, I don't think we sort of totally went over it. But if Haddon already owns technically 58% or 60% of HES, and 40% goes to Killinworth, and they have a deal, the Board of Ed has a deal with Rec Realty now for $450. So 40% of the $450, wouldn't that be, you know, around $200,000? Wouldn't that be the purchase price for Haddon? Because we already own 60% of it. And then you just turn that $200,000 directly over to Killinworth because that was their portion anyway. So the Board of Ed would be voting to give it to us. They wouldn't be making any money on it. Killinworth would get their portion, and we would essentially just be paying Killinworth for their portion, rather than the whole property.
Yeah, Lucy, if we just let the Board of Ed sell HES, then we don't have to pay Killinworth any. The money just stays in the school budget, well, not... So let the Board of Ed just sell HES and put Swan Hill on open space. Then that seems to eliminate a lot of the hassle here. Just let the Board of Ed sell HES. Seriously, you know, let them do it.
Anyone else?
You mentioned Aggie Spring Road being done. Neil Perrin had them that. Aggie Spring Road over here, is that given paid? She had a dollar amount to go for it. Are they doing Aggie Spring Road only? Or are they also doing Aggie Spring Lane?
I don't know, probably done the same.
Yeah, it's a, they're, and it splits, and it's two different roads. So is it both or one?
It's only a $30,000, that would be a lot of...
And the dollar amount for Cory Hill Road, is that after what EverSource said they're covering?
EverSource is never paying anything for Cory Hill Road. They're paying for Cole Road.
And one last thing, the Senior Van posting that you had that closed out a couple of weeks ago. You put on there that the requirement is a CL, CDL B, CDLC with a P endorsement to drive the Senior Van Academy. And it's registered as a service plus. Therefore, you need an F endorsement. An F endorsement covers the service plus. If you don't have it, you're illegal driving that vehicle. The P endorsement is for those that are over $26,000 pounds with a CDL B that carries 60 or more passengers typically. It's the motor coach. So that posting is actually incorrect. Looking out for, God forbid, if somebody does drive it that doesn't have that F endorsement, you have a lawsuit.
Just somebody who's a plane, so it's a cap, that's it.
Anyone else? Yes?
I'd like to just add, it wasn't the, oh, sorry. Bobby Eric, Marjorie, post for your meeting this evening. But I would like to add, it wasn't just the stick shift, although that was one of the pearls. Haddon envisioned a different use for this wheel, but I weren't using it because it's a chance to test the concept before you invest a few hundred thousand dollars in it for a new vehicle. So we're not going to...
It's nice to hear. Anyone else? All right, that was a motion to prepare. On the other side. Thanks, that was a good question.